Call to get to order the council meeting for the city council for the city of Wheatridge, Colorado for February 22, 2021. If you will join me as you are able, please stand and when you see the flag, we'll recite the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Judy Hutchinson.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Rachel Hulteen.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Present.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
And Valerie Nosler Beck.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have no proclamations and ceremonies scheduled tonight. In your packet, councilors, you have the study session notes from February 1, 2021, and city council minutes of February 8, 2021. Are there any corrections noted for the minutes in either of these? Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did contact Clerk Kirkpatrick on page five of city council minutes of February 8 under number four, the short-term rental. Judy was the second on that, and he'll be making those corrections before they go online.
Thank you. Were there any other corrections noted to the minutes? Okay, with those corrections, we will let the minute stand as approved. Are there any, on the approval of the agenda, are there any corrections to the agenda tonight? Being none, we will proceed as published. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. Citizens may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under citizens' right to speak. When you, if you would like to come into the, to the meeting, we will first take those citizens that are in City Hall. We have some there tonight, and after that, we will go to citizens, and you may raise your interest to speak by raising your hand in the, in the raise your hand feature on the virtual platform, or when we get to it, if you're on the telephone, we will ask you to unmute and join the meeting. to unmute and join the meeting. So, Ms. Scheck, we have speakers in the, in the City Hall. Would you please introduce the first speaker?
Mayor, neither of our speakers tonight want to speak at citizens' right to speak. They had, they're commenting on an agenda item.
Okay, very good. Are there any citizens out in, joining us virtually or on the telephone who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak? This is your opportunity on any item that is not on the agenda, and if you would like to speak, raise your hand in the raise your hand feature. Do we have anyone with their hand raised?
We do. We have Guy, followed by Mike.
Okay, and Mr. Namiach will recognize you. If you'd please introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll ask.
Guy Namiach, thirty six fifty Ward Road, Wheatridge, N A H M I A C H. So this is just on, on behalf of the Gazette, I wanted to just do a shout out again for Ms. Sarah Spalding, who has been amazing. We've been doing a lot of pieces about how development works in Wheatridge, and we've gotten a lot of feedback from citizens thanking us for explaining, you know, first of all, that there is a method to the madness, and so she's been great in putting us in touch with everybody that, that's been really instrumental in explaining how the process works. I'm super excited about March. We're talking about bringing back date night and promoting our restaurants and bars and some great stories from our local citizens about their first dates right here in Wheatridge. So have a great meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and now we have Mike.
Hi, my name is Mike Pleiss, and I live at six six seven zero West thirtieth Ave, and that's Wheatridge eight zero two one four. I just wanted to share a recent experience I've had with a short term rental that is across the street from my house, and I, I feel other people are probably in a similar scenario. I have seen a lot more traffic coming and going and carrying on since all of the short term rentals have started across the street from my house, and with a two-year-old son and a five-year-old daughter, I got a small child safety sign that I put out in front of our driveway and house, so when the kids play, they're highly visible because cars come and go and people are up to their own agendas. And last week, my child safety sign got ran over by a U-Haul pulling a trailer with another car on it, and I, I heard some commotion, and upon coming outside, was thrilled to see the individual had stopped his vehicle, but I was a little bit shocked and disappointed to hear that he did not know he, he ran over anything, but had heard some, you know, heard some, some type of a noise. And, you know, we talk, talk things through and we're civil about it, but overall, I, I do feel like there's too much traffic coming day in and day out with as little as one short term rental on a street, and I think we need to consider imposing some, some type of restriction in regards to one night stays. I think there should be a minimum so that our neighborhoods are not acting like motels or hotels where people come and go throughout the night and we don't see who's coming. So just wanted to share that, that recent happening. I'm going to get a new child safety sign, and my kids will continue to play out in front of our street, in front of our house, in the street, because we don't have sidewalks, but we need to do something to try to stop this type of thing from happening.
Okay, thank you very much for, for your comments on that. Generally, we take comments on those agenda items at the time, so we will recognize that you've spoken on that item now, but thank you very much for coming forward with that information. Ms. Scheck, do we have additional speakers for citizens' right to speak?
Mayor, no one with their hand up, but I, we have a couple of callers. I'll unmute in case they want to speak.
Okay, this, for callers who may be on the phone, you may, if you wish to speak on any item that is not on the agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. If you'd like to unmute yourself and ask to be recognized, we'll bring you into the meeting. Okay, I don't, I don't hear anyone wishing to do that, and no more hands are raised, so we will close our citizens' right to speak, and thank you for those citizens that joined us this evening. We will now move to our consent agenda item, number one. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce the five items on our consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, introducing items one A through one E. One A, a motion to award on-call storm sewer maintenance services to High Country Pipe and Utility of Four Columns, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Item one B, a resolution approving agreement with the Wheatridge Sanitation District regarding the Wazza Boulevard Improvement Project from thirty fifth to Interstate seventy. Item one C, a resolution approving the, an agreement with the Wheatridge Water District regarding the Wazza Boulevard Improvement Project from Thirty Fifth Avenue to Interstate seventy. Item one D, a motion to award contract for engineering services, consulting services for Phase Three of the Wazza Boulevard Improvement Project at HCR Engineering Denver, Colorado, in the amount of ninety thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-three cents. And item one E, a motion to approve quarterly payment to the Jefferson County Communications Authority for E nine one one, call taking police radio dispatch services not to exceed six hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-three for two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the agenda items number one A through one E?
I make a motion to approve items one A, one B, one C, one D, and one E.
Thank you. If you'd like to second this motion, please raise your hand. Mr. Stites is recognized. This is our consent agenda item. If you are, if you are in favor of the motion, please raise your hand in the screen, and the clerk will please record the votes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you very much. We will move to agenda item number two. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill number zero three dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance sixteen ninety-seven, series two thousand and twenty, concerning regulation of noise, and at issue, the current code of laws, section sixteen dash one zero three, C, noise ordinance will apply to industrial operations as of February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. The Rocky Mountain Bottle Company, which would be regulated by the ordinance, has developed a sound mitigation wall for its operation, which will not be completed before mid-two thousand and twenty-one. This ordinance extends the effective date for the industrial noise standards until October first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing and go to Mr. Goff. Do we have any further staff report on this item?
Just real briefly to add to Councilmember Nosler Beck, if councilor remembers, this original ordinance was approved in August of, of two thousand and twenty, and it dealt with industrial properties and also other zone properties throughout the city. The industrial portion was effective, originally was effective, lost my date, February, February twenty, February twenty-eighth. We brought it to study session. Rocky Mountain Bottle Company gave a, a presentation on the progress of their noise mitigation efforts, and, and because of the city process that the construction of the sound wall needs to go through, it's going to take a little bit more time than February twenty-eighth to become, for them to come compliant with this ordinance. So City Council agreed to extend that to November first. The rest of the ordinance was effective February twenty-eighth. And, and then there was one question that was brought up today. In the, in the prior action of this council action form, it does mention that the original ordinance does address fireworks, and it does exempt fireworks from the ordinance, but that is only an exemption for city-sponsored fireworks. Regular fireworks are not illegal, are not legal for personal use, so the exemption of fireworks in the ordinance that's already approved is just for city-sponsored firework events. That's all I got, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this up to the public. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak on this issue, this is your opportunity. This is item number two. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, or if you're on the telephone, unmute yourself and ask to speak, we'll bring you into the meeting. Ms. Scheck, do we have anyone with their hand raised?
We don't, Mayor, and I have unmuted the callers, just in case.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll give it one more, one more little piece of time. If you'd like to speak on item number two, now is your opportunity. And we don't see any more hands, so we will close our citizens' right to speak on this item and go to questions from council. Are there any questions from council on this item before I close the public hearing? Ms. Nosler Beck?
I'm just wanted to further clarify or ask Patrick that the city and everybody involved, including Rocky Mountain Bottling Company, is going to be doing everything they can to do this sooner than October first. And I have had a couple of people reach out to me during this whole process, and just wanted to make sure that we were, we were keeping our eye on, hopefully trying to get this done by the summer. So if you could just provide a little update on how that looks.
Yes, we are. Thank you, Nosler Beck, Councilmember Nosler Beck. We, we're definitely on top of this. The Rocky Mountain Bottle has submitted their plans for their, their noise wall, and it is being reviewed by staff. We've sent comments back to Rocky Mountain Bottle. If they can get them turned around fairly quickly here, we may, we may be able to hit a planning commission date in April. If not, it, it'll be May, probably at the latest planning commission, and I believe Rocky Mountain Bottle Company said it would take a couple months of construction, so as soon as planning commission approves it, they can, Rocky Mountain Bottle can pull building permits and start the construction of the walls. So if, if we can make it to an April planning commission meeting, it'll, it'll get done early summer. If we make it to May, it'll be maybe a month later. So the Rocky Mountain Bottle Company is sending a, a letter to the neighborhood, hopefully this week, communicating their progress that they've made, and so as they promised to stay in touch with the neighborhood.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions for council on this before I close the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Nosler Beck, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number zero three dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance sixteen ninety-seven, series two thousand and twenty, concerning regulation of noise on second reading, and that it takes effect upon adoption as permitted by section five point one one of the Charter.
You'd like to second this, please raise your hand. Ms. Dozeman. Is there a discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's just worth noting the amount of effort and energy that the Rocky Mountain Bottle Company has put into being a good neighbor in the situation. Obviously, that they're a great source of noise, but they're also very responsive to their neighbors, they're responsive to council, they've been involved in this process from day one, and so that, when I look at, you know, what it means to be a good neighbor at the business, I, I think Rocky Mountain Bottle Company has really shown that, and I, I hope the other businesses that are impacted by this noise ordinance can take a note from how Rocky Mountain Bottle Company has conducted themselves in this manner.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Ms. Nosler Beck?
I just wanted to add on to what Councilmember Urban mentioned. The Rocky Mountain Bottling Plant has been a great partner in all of this, and they're going to be making sure that neighbors to the plant will be notified along this entire process. There'll be letters going out to the neighborhood and to neighboring HOAs, and so hopefully this can continue to be a, a neighborly project.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand in the screen, and will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number three. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill number zero two dash two zero two one, an ordinance amending the Wheatridge Code of Laws to adopt a new Article fourteen and Chapter eleven entitled Short Term Rental Licenses, and in connection therewith, making conforming amendments in Chapter twenty-two and twenty-six. At issue, the city of Wheatridge does not currently define or regulate short term rentals in the Code of Laws. STRs are dwelling units or portions of dwelling units that are used for lodging accommodations for transient occupancy for a period less than thirty consecutive days. STRs have existed in one form or fashion for decades, but have become much more prevalent as land use phenomenon in the last ten years. They're commonly listed on web-based platforms, including Airbnb, VRBO, and Expedia. The purpose of this ordinance is to define STRs, allow, license, and regulate them.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Scott Cutler is a senior planner in our community development department.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Proceed.
All right. Good evening, everyone, mayor and council. I'm going to share a PowerPoint slide with you, and give me just a second. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this is zoning case twenty dash zero eight about short term rentals. So a short term rental is defined as a dwelling unit or a portion of a dwelling unit that is used for lodging accommodations for less than thirty consecutive days. I mean, like was said in the introduction, they're commonly listed on websites such as Airbnb and VRBO. They've been around for hundreds of years, but with the rise of these internet platforms, they've definitely gotten more popular as a recent land use phenomenon. To give everyone some background on the process, City Council has actually wanted this to be done for a while. It was on City Council's two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen strategic plan, and then there've been four study sessions at City Council to discuss the specific ordinance, including regulation and licensing, starting in two thousand and nineteen and finishing late last year, including November second, two thousand and twenty, study session where City Council reached consensus to move forward with the current ordinance framework that's being presented tonight. And just to give everyone an update, Planning Commission recommended approval of the Chapter twenty-six portions of the ordinance back in December. So current code, short term rentals are not mentioned in city code. By default, that means they're not allowed, but we also don't have any code-specific language around their allowance or not, so it makes it, it really challenging to enforce upon existing short term rentals, and it also doesn't allow people to get licensed or provide revenue to the city. So there's just complete silence in the code as it is now, and the purpose of this ordinance is to define and regulate short term rentals. The proposed ordinance, as agreed upon by the council framework, would allow short term rentals in the city of Wheatridge, but to limit their overall proliferation. So a short term rental host, which is a property owner that manages a short term rental, can operate one short term rental in an entire dwelling unit that's not occupied by the host, so that's a whole home rental where the property owner is not present, and then one short term rental and a portion of a dwelling unit, such as a bedroom or a few rooms part, part of the house, that is continuously occupied by the host, and that's what's called a partial home rental. So there's two different categories, and each person in the city of Wheatridge is entitled to both, or one, or, or e- either way. As an exception to that rule, apartments and mixed-use buildings in the commercial one zone district and the mixed-use series zone districts pin up to four short term rentals in a development, and that's just because the character of commercial corridors is a lot different. Those zone districts already allow bed and breakfasts in hotels, so it's a bit more commercial-oriented uses. And then condo owners, because a condo building, each unit is individually owned, each host is allowed to operate a short term rental, or each owner is allowed to operate a short term rental, which is the same as the standard, but to limit the overall proliferation in a condo But to limit the overall proliferation in a condo building, we're also proposing a maximum of four short-term rentals in a condo building, so that if there is a condo building with 200 units, that means there couldn't necessarily be 200 short-term rentals. The requirements of a short-term rental. So if someone wanted to operate a short-term rental in the City of Wheat Ridge, this ordinance would require them to obtain a short-term rental business license and pay an application fee, which we've set at $200 a year. They would be subject to lodger's tax. And actually, the code already allows for something like a short-term rental to require lodger's tax. But we're just making it more specific in this ordinance that a short-term rental specifically has to remit lodger's tax to the city. The application requirements, it has to include a lot of things, obviously, ownership information, things like that. But one of the most important things is a 24/7 emergency contact information for either the host or if the host has someone managing the property for them, or just a friend that can get to the property. That's a 24/7 emergency contact information must be provided, as well as proof of ownership and proof of insurance. So we have to make sure that the host actually does own the property and the property is insured. Also, they'll be required to certify certain safety requirements and building code requirements. So things like smoke detectors, proper egress, so there's an exit point, things of that nature. And then a description of the space used as a short-term rental. So this is where someone that's applying would say whether this is a whole home or a partial home rental, and then what portions of the house are being used, what parking is available, things like that. Additional requirements, short-term rentals would only be allowed in legal dwelling units. So that means a dwelling unit that is recognized by the city, that does not mean RVs or tents or campers or anything like that. And short-term rentals must adhere to building codes. So that doesn't allow them to be operated in temporary structures. Also, a restriction on short-term rentals indeed restricted affordable or did restricted, age-restricted housing. And that's something that the applicant would be required to attest to, but then staff will verify as part of the application review. And then as well, a parking space must be added if the property does not already meet the minimum parking requirements for that district. As far as operational requirements go, if a short-term rental is approved, the host would be required to notify neighbors within 100 feet of the property and to provide the 24/7 emergency contact information to all of them as part of that notification. And that is something that would only need to be done if the license is approved. But it's required that that host certify that as part of the application process. Short-term rental license and contact information also needs to be posted within the short-term rental, so that a renter has a question, they could contact the emergency contact at any time. And also, if there's a complaint, they could direct, a complaint about the rental, they could direct that to the city and reference the license number. Some additional operational requirements include an age restriction required to rent to people 21 and over only. And then advertisement restrictions. Obviously, the license number needs to be posted on the advertisement, but also not allowing for things like a 420-friendly listing, for example. I mean, that's all included in the details of the ordinance. And then, of course, any short-term rental, just like any other property in the city, is held to the same noise, trash, and parking restrictions. Later on, after six months, there is a 2% cap on short-term rentals per city council district to be enacted. That is something that we discussed at the last study session and decided that it needs to be on a per-district basis at a 2% level. We didn't land on an exact date, but we are proposing a six-month, I guess, waiting period until that ordinance takes effect. And that, that cap, just for everyone listening out there, would limit the amount of whole-home rentals to 2% of all of the single-family duplex and townhome units in that zone district. So that would really cut down on the overall number of short-term rentals that are allowed in single-family areas. It wouldn't limit partial-home rentals or short-term rentals in commercial and mixed-use zones. Based on some of our research, those are really small amounts anyway. Probably anywhere from 15 to 20% of the total short-term rentals are partial home. Most of them are whole homes, so the cap really will have an impact. And then as part of that, staff will maintain a waitlist and track the number of short-term rentals in each district. And as we lead up to the cap implementation, we'll have a really good idea of which districts might be getting close to the cap and communicate that effectively on the website. As far as enforcement goes, the ordinance allows the city the ability to revoke the license or impose fines under the existing business license framework for the city. So it will be a different license than just a standard business license, but the code, the way it's written, would allow us to use that process to revoke or impose fines upon the license for the existing business license framework or for a violation of the short-term rental ordinance. And the second bullet point, council specifically requested this, a waiting period of one year for those to fail, who fail to register their short-term rental by the end of the grace periods or start of operations. And that would be just an approach of if you're not going to, if you're going to operate and not register, you are being punished by having to wait a year before then you can get, make it legitimate. And with that, just some final policy considerations before we turn it over to questions and public comment. There wasn't a firm direction or date from council on either the registration grace period. It was included in the current ordinance as being November 1st. So the current ordinance is showing registration beginning May 1st, which is the ordinance effective date. And then on November 1st, the registration grace period ends. All short-term rentals need to be registered. And then any new short-term rental has to be registered the day they begin. That's also the deadline to begin the collection of lodger's tax. So the way that ordinance is currently written, lodger's tax needs to be remitted on the earlier date of when the short-term rental is approved, or November 1st. And then the district cap would also take effect November 1st. After some further discussion, we're actually making a slight recommendation to change the ordinance as written to be what's on the right side of the screen, which is registrations still begins on May 1st, but then the registration grace period actually would end on August 1st. And that's a shorter timeline for everyone to get registered and into compliance. And then all lodger's tax would start being collected a hard date on August 1st. So that would potentially allow for the collection of lodger's tax at an earlier date, and everyone starts at the same time, so we don't have a staggered remittance of lodger's tax. And then we are still recommending that the district cap take effect six months after the original ordinance effective date of May 1st. So I know that's a lot there, a lot to think about. But that concludes my presentation. And of course, myself and our entire team that's worked on this ordinance is available for questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open up to the public to speak on this issue. If you would like to speak on agenda item number three, now is your opportunity. If you would please raise your hand in the Zoom format, or we will, we will go to telephone after that. But first, we will start, I understand we have several speakers in our city hall, and we will invite those speakers to speak first. When you come to speak, if you would please give us your first name and your last name. If you would please spell your last name for the record and give us your address. And then you, we will go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is David Bondarchuk, followed by Jay Harris, and both of them are in chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
Hello, my name is David Bondarchuk. The last name is spelled B-O-N-D-A-R-C-H-U-C-K. And my property is located at 6440 West 31st Avenue in District 1 of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, 80214. I am speaking tonight, and thank you for this opportunity. I am against this legislation. I went ahead and emailed the city council prior to me speaking tonight. The first part of my email is mainly general housekeeping issues, because I feel as though this ordinance is very poorly written. But for the sake of time, I'm going to focus on a couple of sections that are of particular interest to me. The first is Section 11-503, Section 2. This part of the legislation requires us to post contact information on the inside of the property for whoever may be staying there with the lodger's permit. I am against this, because this goes against the way the Airbnb platform is set up. If there is an issue concerning a current short-term rental tenant or the property in which they've rented, then it needs to go through the site platform, such as Airbnb, to avoid a he-said, she-said type of situation down the road. All communication needs to go through the app. I have no issues alerting my neighbors of my contact information or you all down here at City Hall, which I have honestly already done. But posting it physically in the property of the short-term rental to receive calls, texts, emails, or any other form of correspondence outside the host app, which determines fault in the man, in the event of a disaster, payouts for guests, and the $1 million insurance policy per rental through Airbnb, this is just going to create legal issues if people are communicating outside the app. So I'm against that part of this legislation. My next issue is concerning Section 11-504, Section 3, and Section 26-645, Section D, Number 3. And this basically just allows the city to maintain the right to conduct an inspection of the property upon notice, blah, 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 blah. I would like to propose a grandfather clause to this section concerning historical homes in Wheat Ridge, making them exempt from changes and new laws that could impact the significant of historical nature of Wheat Ridge neighborhoods with the City of Wheat Ridge limits. Meaning, upon inspection, if the city permits inspector, you know, suddenly surprises the owner of a short-term rental with a requirement to like rewire your home or update this or that, and it really goes against the historical nature of the community or of the neighborhood, I would like that written into this statute. Like I said, the rest of my concerns are more just housekeeping. And I'd like to reserve the rest of my time in case the council has questions on how I operate my Airbnb or any issues that I've emailed to them previously.
Mr. Bondarchuk, we do not have a time limit on, on the public comment on hearing items. And I don't know whether, whether council will have any questions of you later when we finish public comment, but just so that you're aware.
Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shek, do we have an additional speaker in the council chambers?
We do. Mayor, this is Mr. Jay Harris. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Thank you very much for letting us speak. I too am against these regulations. I was actually disappointed and surprised when they came in.
But before you begin, would you please give us your name and address?
My name is Jay Harris, and address is 7425 West 34th Avenue.
Thank you.
Our family bought our home there in 1995. The entire time, 26 years, we've been model citizens. And the last couple of years, been renting out our home long-term and short-term. The short-term rentals have actually worked out much better than the long-term rentals. In fact, the long-term renters around in my neighborhood are more trouble than anything else. Now, when guests come, they ask where to shop, where to eat. I send them to Pizza Pub, Safeway, and Wheat Ridge Corner Shops. A couple of times, some of my guests have bought new bicycles at Wheat Ridge Cyclory and new skis at Larson Ski and Sport, just generating income for the local businesses here in Wheat Ridge. Now, it's my understanding that the city council and the mayor are elected. And so they're public servants, not dictators, telling us what we can or cannot do with our own homes. So as soon as I received the info on the new proposed rules for the short-term rentals, I sent them to my real estate attorney at Holland &amp; Hart in downtown Denver. That's the most prestigious law firm in Colorado. He's been practicing real estate law for over 27 years now and has never lost a case. After his review, he called me back to explain to me these new regulations are vastly discriminatory and are shouting for legal action due to them being against the Federal Fair Housing Act. He said Wheat Ridge would have to include every single landlord, long-term and short-term, for them to line up with the Federal Fair Housing Act, for it not to be discriminatory. Not to mention it discriminates against age, 420 usage, and treating a residential home as a commercial building, and not allowing their property owners to do as they wish with their own home. The City of Avon also went against a short-term rental situation, not doing what Avon told them to do. The landlord sued the city in federal court using the Federal Fair Housing Act and won against the City of Avon and won a $500,000 judgment against that city. Not to mention, the City of Colorado Springs, much larger than Wheat Ridge, tried similar rules, and they backed down, they saw the lawsuit win. Now they just have a license and a tax, no other major rules, a license and a tax for the City of Colorado Springs. These proposals seem to be a personal attack on all of us who choose to earn a little bit more money with our properties. My attorney asked when these rules go into effect, and I notify him right away once the homeowner has been harmful damage done to him or her by the City of Wheat Ridge, so that he can file a legal class action lawsuit in federal court to remedy these decroney rules. No, it's not a threat, it's just going to how it's going to go down if you want to continue down this road. So please reconsider to change the rules to just an annual license and a small tax. To move forward with these new rules would be a bad choice for Wheat Ridge and its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, do we have additional speakers in the city council chambers?
Mayor, we don't have additional speakers in, in chambers, but we do have some hands raised in Zoom.
Okay, if you'd bring them into our meeting.
Yep. First up is Carrie Whitaker, followed by Guy Namiash.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Carrie Whitaker. That's W-H-I-T-A-K-E-R. And my address is 6630 West 30th Avenue. And I wanted to start by just thanking city council, thanking the city for taking this on. For the city, this is a big undertaking. And for those of us who have been concerned and involved on this issue, we appreciate you taking this, this challenge on. For the city council, you know, this has been a topic that you've been working on for quite some time. We appreciate all the efforts and work that's been done on this topic. It's absolutely a difficult, complicated subject with a variety of perspectives and views. I think at this point, most everyone that's been involved believes that they didn't receive everything that they wanted, which is a good sign of compromise and good policy. I do need to single out Councilmember Hoppy for all the work that she's done on this initiative. I remember when we had her over to our street to talk to our neighbors about our issues and our concerns. She listened earnestly. She's been forthright with us throughout this entire process. It really helped to drag this across the finish line. So thank you, Councilmember Hoppy. Next up, I, I just want to echo Mike's comments earlier in the meeting about a minimum night stay. With no minimum night stay, we can currently have up to seven different groups of short-term renters enter our street and our neighborhood on a weekly basis. There's a minimum night standard, such as a two-night. That would limit it to three or four different groups of people visiting our street. That sounds like a big number as it is, but it's much smaller than seven. So I would ask for your support on a minimum night stay. But in general, I just ask for your support of this bill in general, the minimum night stay. And thank you for all your hard work and your efforts on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shek, our next speaker?
Yes, thank you. We have Guy Namiash, followed by Connie Lane.
Hey, good evening. Guy Namiash, N-A-H-M-I-A-C-H, 3650 Ward Road. You know, it took me a little while to get used to the Airbnb being allowed, and I, and I love the idea now. I love the two-night minimum. But what I don't like is the discriminatory 21 over 18. That's just, that's illegal, first of all. That's against fair housing. And 18-year-olds can rent hotels. And so I'm not sure what the 21 is. The $200 a year for the license, that's, that's completely crazy. Boulder is $180 for four years. The inspections, how are you going to do that? You're going to inspect just the room that someone is renting? Lack of consistency. The cap of 2% is, that's going to basically increase the value of homes in the districts where we haven't hit 2% for investors. So that's going to So that's going to drive up the price and put out first-time home buyers. Denver has about 5,500 Airbnbs. Only half of them are licensed. I suspect that's what we're going to have here. Why so complicated? Denver just asked you for a fire extinguisher, a list of emergency numbers, and a list of local services. You have, it's about the end user, right? It's not about the city. And so if you make it simple, more people will sign up, generating tax revenue and attracting more tourists and tourist dollars to our city. This is really convoluted. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, our next speaker?
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have Connie, followed by Chris McCune.
Good evening. My name is Connie Lane, L-A-N-E. And I live at 3200 Vance Street here in Wheat Ridge. Fascinating conversation in city council. Hats off to all of you. I certainly enjoyed the PowerPoint presentation on this important issue. I'm speaking as the neighbor of ours who actually has a short-term rental on their property. And I want to support this ordinance, one to get their family and their property properly licensed and allowing you all as commissioners and stewards of our fine city to be able to have this be a legitimate business. I want to say as a neighbor, I am not, we are not impacted at all by the guests that come to and from this property. There is plenty of parking. There is plenty of onsite security. We feel like it's a great impact to our community and our neighborhood to allow guests to come into our community. We support this 100%. And thanks to all of you for your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Ms. Shek, our next speaker?
Yes, we have Chris McCune, followed by Joanna Morkan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Chris McCune, M-C-C-U-N-E. And my family lives at 7395 West 32nd Avenue, Wheat Ridge 80033. We are Roost Farms. If you've ever driven by 36th Avenue and seen that six-foot metal rooster, that's us. And full disclosure, that was my neighbor Connie who just called. Thank you, Connie. Love you. We are calling to say we're in favor of the city getting involved and taking a step with whatever, this ordinance. I want to tell you just a little bit about us and kind of where we've landed with doing short-term rentals. We moved to Wheat Ridge in 2014 from the Highlands. And we moved here specifically to start a city farm. And some of you will know that Wheat Ridge, because of various city ordinance, has basically, in my opinion, the best option for urban agriculture in the metro area. And I don't know, some people in my family call it a midlife crisis. We prefer to think of it as an awakening. But we had this idea of doing something like this. We did a lot of research. We looked at a lot of different places. And then we settled on this notion that doing this in Wheat Ridge was going to be the right place. We were fortunate enough to find this property here. We're basically at the intersection of 32nd and Vance. It's an old property. It's a 1912 house. We have an acre and a quarter. And we have some random outbuildings, some of which are original. We started this farm. We sell organic vegetables and flowers. We also raise chickens and sell eggs. And it's our eighth year of business. So most of our customers are local people. People that walk to the farm, pick up their vegetables, cut their flowers, take home their eggs, take home the loaf of bread that my wife makes. And we've had people that have been part of this farm network every year, like all eight years. And we always welcome some new people. And what we think, you know, we are selling these agricultural products. But what we're also selling is a vision of what it means to be connected in this community. And some of that surely has something to do with the roots of our community. But it's also a sense of like, hey, we're grounded in this place. We're growing things. And you feel connected to something that's very alive, beautiful, and old when you interact with all of this. So we started with all of that. And then we had this property and we were kind of looking around and saying, okay, you know, what, how can we use this place? What can we do? And I mentioned that we had these outbuildings. And about two years ago, we started to explore the option of doing short-term rentals. And, you know, we wondered, what would it be like? And here's what we've discovered, as we've had about two years of doing this. People come to this place and love it. People come to Wheat Ridge, maybe who wouldn't have come here otherwise, but they get a chance to stay in a cute place, on a city farm, and they find that they love it or really like it. And later, we might read some stuff from one of the guestbooks that shares some of the comments that people have had. But when they come, we point them to all the local businesses. We say, hey, you could walk to Colorado Plus. You could go to Clancy's, Safeway's down the street. You know, there's Stylist's and Crate. All these different places that the people that stay here come to. And we encourage, we have a guestbook. We have West 29th on there, you know, shout out to the mayor, and different places that we want to say, hey, check out these things that you might not otherwise find that are in our community. And people say, thank you. I just saw something here that I didn't know existed. And, you know, kind of as a wrap-up, one of my favorite stories is somebody who came here just merely to stay here for a couple of days, check out Colorado, came, enjoyed it, and then later decided to move here. They made a point of coming to find us and say, hey, we weren't even looking at this. But when we stayed at your place, it just opened our eyes to this thing that's here. And then now they moved here. So we know that having a short-term rental has had a fantastic positive impact for our family and for our business. We also believe that it's had a positive impact for our community. And we want to see that go forward in the best way for everybody in the city. So, yeah, we welcome the city being involved and helping us make a common sense approach to managing this. I asked myself, you know, what would I feel like if I lived somewhere where it did turnover every day? I wouldn't like that. We take hospitality for and with our guests and our service to our neighbors seriously. And I know that most, maybe all, of the other people in the city that have short-term rentals feel the same way. So, yeah, we're Roost Farms. That's what we do. And I appreciate all the work and effort that all of you have put into this. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, do we have another speaker?
We do. We have Joanna Morkan. And then following Joanna, I do not have any other Zoom hands raised.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Morkan. Last name is M-O-R-K-E-N. I'm at 3870 Oak Street in Wheat Ridge. And I did submit some comments earlier today via the online forum. Hopefully you've had an opportunity to review my comments. And I just had a few additional thoughts after listening to some of the speakers tonight that I wanted to kind of hit the highlights. Let me just comment briefly on the discussion around one-night stays. I can't tell you how many times I've had guests, in fact, I have a group flying in on Friday, who are coming to visit our local ski resorts. And they're getting in 11, 12 o'clock at night, and they need a one-night stay. And they've chose my home where they feel safe and comfortable, where I can make referrals to local businesses and vendors, and they can be on their way to hit the great ski resorts here in Colorado. So I think it's unfair to assume that one-night stays are troublesome. I recognize that it may increase some of the traffic in the neighborhood, but hopefully it's something that is a responsible super host that I'm managing with my bookings. Which leads me to my next point. I certainly don't object to some sort of requirements around short-term rentals. I live here. I want to contribute to my community and I want to be a good neighbor. But what I do object to is the interference or the attempt to dictate what type of customer that I let into my own home. I feel like I do a really good job of screening my people because it's important that they have a good experience as well as me. If I don't have a good experience, it's not good for my business. So I think those types of things need to be left to me as a host. The other thing I wanted to comment on is the significant investment I've made to improving my property. Obviously, it makes for a nicer stay for people who come to my home, but it also is an improvement to my home and my community. I've used local vendors. I've pumped money into the economy by making those improvements. And during COVID, I've had to become extremely creative in earning income. Many of us have reduced our hours or have been laid off. And so being able to use the biggest asset that I have to generate income and give back and contribute to my community and visitors in Colorado is extremely important to me. And it just feels a little restrictive with some of the requirements that you're considering putting into place. As a responsible neighbor, I contacted my neighbors years ago when I started doing Airbnb. So they're all aware that I'm doing that. It just seems like a good thing to do. And lastly, I have made multiple referrals to restaurants and local businesses. My gosh, I've walked my dog with people around the block, people who've stayed here in my home. So I just want to reiterate that short-term rentals can be a very positive thing for our community. The last thing I wanted to comment, I know there's language around partial and whole-home rentals. There, I'll be doing a hybrid of that where during the winter months, I rent out rooms in my home. But during the summer months, I'll be doing whole-home. So I ask that you consider that nuance as you're drafting your legislation. And I think that concludes my comments. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with all of you and appreciate your service to our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Ms. Shek, additional speakers with their hands raised?
We do. We have two more. We have either Heather or Ben Vanderbar, and then followed by Jerry DiTullio. So over to Heather or Ben.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'd like to thank you all for the time and effort that you spent researching and discussing the short-term rentals. We really appreciate that you've considered short-term rentals to be offered in the city of Wheat Ridge. Our family has been renting.
Before you begin, could you give us your name?
I'm sorry. My name is Heather Vanderberg, and V-A-N-D-E-B-U-R-G-H. And my address is 7185 West 48th Avenue, Wheat Ridge 80033.
Thank you so much.
Sorry about that. So our family has been renting an owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied short-term rental in Wheat Ridge. And we have 348 reviews on Airbnb. We've met many of our guests and some of them have become friends. We really enjoy renting our property as a short-term rental instead of a long-term because we're able to keep up on the property at all times. We're proud of what we offer and we only want to offer the best for our guests. The one thing that we did want to talk about was, we'd like to ask for your consideration in using a short-term rental accommodation tax instead of a lodging tax. The city of Wheat Ridge's lodging tax is 10%, which is very high. Arvada's lodging tax is 2%. Boulder's is 7.5%. Broomfields is 1.6%. Colorado Springs is 2%, for example. So some cities only charge the public accommodation tax instead of a lodging tax. I think lowering the tax from 10% would definitely help hosts be able to continue offering their short-term rentals. Again, I'd like to thank you all for your time and we look forward to smart regulations for short-term rentals in the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mayor. And now we have Jerry DiTullio.
Okay, Mr. DiTullio.
Thank you, Jerry DiTullio, D-I-T-U-L-L-I-O. Live at 32nd and Newland. I wanted to thank the council for working on this. As you might remember, I had brought something up to other citizens about this years ago. The concern that we've had is that, I know we have a lot of good landlords in the city of Wheat Ridge, but really, when you think about it, short-term rentals in neighborhoods are basically little mini hotels that are running as a business in your neighborhood, especially in single-family homes. And that has been the concern since day one is that you have people coming and going in your neighborhood that you didn't know daily or every other day. And so I, you know, worked with Carrie Whitaker and talked to him and a few other folks. And this is a good, common-sense, win-win approach to short-term rentals in the city of Wheat Ridge. The lodging tax was approved by the voters for the hotels and motels. I think the 10% applies here as well because these are considered short-term rentals or mini motels and hotels within a residential setting. So the voters actually approved the 10%. I would be inclined to ask the council not to change that right now and see what happens. I think, you know, we tell kids they can't smoke or they can't drink until they're 21. And I think it makes sense that you tell folks this, that if you're going to be living in a rental, a short-term rental in a neighborhood, you got to behave. You can't have your graduation party there and trash the neighborhood. So I think the age requirements make sense. The lodging tax amount makes sense. And I think I agree with Carrie Whitaker and a few other of the citizens that have spoken, Councilmember Hoppy as well, that you don't want seven different people living in your neighborhood seven different nights. So I think a short minimum stay of two or three days makes sense. But this has been a long time coming. I really don't think you have to beat this dead horse anymore. I think you should look at passing this tonight as is. And if you have to make adjustments in six months or nine months, do that. But with a good, solid bill and you put a lot of work into it the past couple of years with staff and with the community. So I commend you and good luck passing this tonight. I hope it goes 8-0. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Ms. Shek, additional speakers with their hands raised?
I don't see anyone with their hands raised, Mayor, but I will unmute the phone callers just to see, make sure that there's no one that would like to speak.
Okay, we are at our public comment on Agenda Item Number 3. If you would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand in Zoom format or unmute yourself if you're on the telephone and we will bring you into the meeting. Don't see any further interest, any people that would like to speak. So we will close our public comment on Agenda Item Number 3 and go to questions from council on this item. Ms. Hoppy and Ms. Weaver?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Scott and Ken. As far as the issue that was brought up about Airbnb's, their complaint process, and that those complaints should go through the platform to, because that's how they're managed between the host and the renter. Do you have any more information about that?
That is true. Airbnb does have, and I'm sure other sites as well, have the ability for a renter to contact the host directly. And usually, they don't give you the direct contact information, but it's through email or through the app. I mean, that's usually related to items around this, you know, I don't know, the air conditioning is not working or if there is a complaint, everyone has the option to use that. I think the requirement for having the contact information also in the short-term rental was something I believe that council actually requested to have, like, a renter to have another option to contact the host if, for whatever reason, they're not able to in another way.
And I do think that through our discussion, part of it was if there is an emergency, then is there an immediate way to be able to get ahold of someone who could be at the property quickly? But I just, I just wanted to ask if, do you know about, like, has the company that you've spoken with that works like the third-party that works towards helping with the regulation, have they said anything specifically about contacts needing to go directly through the app?
They have not. And actually, most cities do require a twenty-four-seven emergency contact information. I don't know if most cities require it to be posted in the short-term rental, but as far as the application goes, most cities do require an emergency contact on file, at least on the city's side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Dahl, could you comment on, on some of the legality issues that were, that were brought up by, by one of the speakers? Just regarding housing and, and the rights of a property owner?
Sure. These ordinances, as council's aware, are widespread across the country, really. And there have been any number of cases brought to challenge. One of the more recent ones comes from a state in New York. And it's pretty typical for these challenges to include a Fair Housing Act claim. And the courts have been pretty consistent in rejecting those claims. As the council knows that the city not that long ago here in Wheat Ridge adjusted their zoning code to address group homes under the theory that that is important for Fair Housing Act compliance. But let's remember, and the courts make the distinction, that these are, Fair Housing Act addresses resident, the opportunity for persons in a protected class to live in a residential neighborhood in the same way as other persons that own homes or rent homes in a residential neighborhood to live there, which is very distinct, and the courts distinguish that from persons coming to stay in a hotel for a couple of days. That's not residents in the community. That's, that's a rental of, of a space for transient occupancy. And the Fair Housing Act talks about housing, housing for, for residents where you're allowed to live and you're encouraged to live in a community so that, so you can have that experience. Very different than a commercial short-term rental or hotel rental. Similarly, the courts have been pretty consistent in, in not accepting challenges to equal protection or deprocess, primarily recognizing that this is a land use regulation. And cities and counties throughout the country, especially in Colorado, have the authority to regulate land use. And that's exactly what the city's doing here. It's not something that implicates the Fair Housing laws because, again, that's, that's housing where you're living there basically permanently. It's your residence. And the cutoff here, of course, is well below that, at less than thirty days. And so those challenges have largely been rejected. You don't have a US Supreme Court decision yet, but there are several working their way up through the federal district courts. And the most recent one that I mentioned is from New York State Shelter Island. It was a resort in the state. That was in, I believe, late twenty nineteen. So we have pretty recent case law authority for the kind of regulations that the city's proposing. The ones in this ordinance are not unique and, and extreme as compared with ordinances that are across the country in multiple, multiple locations.
Okay, thank you. I had, I forgot my other question, I'll come back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go next to Ms. Hulteen and then Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions, one that relates specifically to the ordinance. There's multiple references in here in terms of certification of basic safety items like fire extinguisher. And then there's also a reference to inspections. Can, can somebody clarify, when someone's going in for their license and they're having to certify the basic safety things, is that just something that they would be just putting in an application that they're claiming that they in fact have these things? Or would there be an actual inspection of the property for licensing? And then secondly, with that, you know, the, we had one person concerned about having their historic home inspected. Do we see the city inspecting for random reasons? Or would those inspections really be in response to repeated complaints or concerns? And then I have a follow-up to that.
Okay, I can start the response at least. So no, the city will not be doing any inspections at time of application. What they're, what someone would be doing is certifying that they do have, like, a fire extinguisher on the property, that there is an exit to the house or wherever the person is staying. And that's it, it's just a certification. So they're testing on the application that they are able to provide that. Where the city's never going to do any inspections on any short-term rentals unless, I believe, the way the ordinance is written, if there's, you know, sustained complaints or anything like that, we're not going to be going into historic homes for a short-term rental and make someone rip out the wires in a different part of the house that's not even being used as a short-term rental. So there, there's not any formalized inspection process as part of this ordinance.
Great, thank you. My second question has more to do with the process of passing this ordinance. So there have been multiple study sessions and this has been something that's been in process for quite a while. And it's a really complicated ordinance. And we heard tonight a pretty broad range of thoughts, opinions, requests. Can someone just clarify, if for some reason we're not able to pass this ordinance tonight, what would happen to the status of regulating short-term rentals in the city?
Be current, current status, basically. We're, we're, we're not regulating and, and, but we're not, not regulating also, if that makes sense. As, as I think Scott mentioned, they're not mentioned in our current codes. So that essentially means they're, they're not allowed, but we have not been enforcing that because we know this has been a discussion for quite some time. And we're waiting until we had regulations in place. So unless council tells us different, if this doesn't pass tonight, we would, we would just continue with that process.
Okay, and then when would we be able to revisit it if it doesn't pass tonight? Would it be restricted like a zoning or would, would, and I'm, just to be very clear, I am very much hoping we pass this tonight, but I also.
Think you have a couple of options you could, Ms. Hulteen, you could, you could postpone or continue the public hearing, right, Mr. Dahl? So date certain and bring it back. And, but if it, if it just pass, if it fails tonight because of a lack of, of a majority vote, Mr. Dahl can maybe answer that. I, I think you could bring it back. It's not a land use decision, so that has the year, one-year restriction on it where you can't bring it back for a year. I don't think this is the same. But City Council Rules does have a, has a restriction. I think you'd have to wait six months, I believe, according to City Council Rules to bring it back. Mr. Dahl's looking, looks like.
Yeah, a couple of things. Mr. Goff is right. You, one of your choices, of course, is just to continue the public hearing or close the public hearing and continue it for action at which you could take amendments and whatnot, but you wouldn't be able to take additional testimony if you're inclined to continue it, to keep working on it. The better rule is probably to continue the hearing because inevitably you do get people that want to show up at that further time and speak with you and you're in the position of telling them that you can't, that they can't. So that's one door is obviously continue this hearing and take more evidence, testimony and, and the direct staff perhaps to do research or to bring amendments. That's one door. Mr. Goff is right, we don't have the twelve-month restriction on, say, a rezoning that fails. Instead, your council rules have a six-month rule under reconsideration saying that if, if it'd be a motion to reconsider, if it fails tonight, then the motion to reconsider can be made at that or the next meeting. But if it's not passed then, then you have to wait six months for that matter to come back on the agenda, understandably, because otherwise a motion, an ordinance could fail. And, and you'd see it every meeting for the next six months and you'd be voting it down again. And so there's the required six-month runoff period. So if it doesn't pass, whenever you finally do vote on it, then you've got a chance to reconsider at the next meeting. And if that fails, it's, it's six months. Or if there's no motion to reconsider and it has failed, say, tonight, it's six months until the matter could be back on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I asked that just because, you know, there's been a lot of work and I think we've listened to a lot of different stakeholders in this. And it's been, I think, a really well-thought-out, not perfect for all parties, but, you know, I, I don't know if more work's going to make it more perfect. So I just appreciate all the work and I think it's well-thought-out. It supports some of the suggestions staff has made. But I, at this point, don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have Ms. Hoppy and then Ms. Weaver and then Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about the, if you look in section eleven dash five oh three, operational requirements, we have a number one, a number two, another number two, a number three, and a number four. So that'll need to be renumbered. So will that be something that, that will have to be added into the motion?
Typically, for numbering matters like this, when the ordinance is given to our codifiers, the company that codifies the ordinance and, and creates new pages for the codebook, the codifiers will remedy any numbering or cross-referencing problems. So while we try to fix ordinances as well as we can on the spot, sometimes there are, are those kind of problems. And there is a net, there is a safety net for that in the form of the codifier.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Weaver and then Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I think this is a, a question for, for you, Scott. I'm, I'm just a little concerned about the two percent rule that we've been discussing. And I totally understand why we're thinking about it. But I'm, I'm concerned for two reasons. First of all, one of our last speakers mentioned that, you know, they, they rent a, a single room, but then sometimes, like in the summer, rent their entire house. I am concerned that what if that person is then not able to get the, the whole house certification because they're all taken in their district? Can that happen, Scott? And then I have a follow-up question to that.
Yeah, and I, I wanted to respond to that anyway because I think what we would request is that if you ever feel like you're going to need the whole home license, you should just apply for that because you would otherwise run the risk of potentially being cut out by the cap. So if that individual wanted to operate a whole-home rental some of the year and a partial home some of the year, they would end up applying for the whole-home license. And then you can always modify it to make it less intensive, but you couldn't modify a partial-home license to a whole-home.
Okay, well, that leads me to my next question. Because of course, I'm thinking, well, I don't rent my house now, but I also don't want to lose the opportunity to rent my whole house at some point. You know, in that, I don't know, maybe someday I'll get to leave the farm for a summer. So what prevents people from, from everybody going out, getting the, the certification and just holding on to it because they don't want to lose it? Because now I just have to pay two hundred dollars a year to keep the option available? Is there, is there the potential of locking up this opportunity for people? Does that make any sense?
I hear what you're saying. It looks like Patrick and Jerry unmuted themselves too.
Not sure if I have anything wise to say, but it sounds, I think it's a good point, Ms. Weaver. I don't think there's anything in the ordinance stopping somebody from doing that.
There isn't. And I've seen this very issue raised in other cities here in Colorado that have these regulations and limit, basically limit the market so that these
Right.
become desirable. And there has not been a, an effort, and I think wisely, to drill further down and say, beyond acquiring it, you've actually also got to use it actively for some amount of time. And then you get into figuring out how many days it's got to be rented. And of course, that is really subject to market forces and not something that is, is easily regulatable by the city. While you get into that kind of level of detail, I don't recommend it for the reasons discussed. It, it creates its own problems and, and regulatory schemes you'd have to put in place to, and disclosures you'd need from the property owner that I, I think reached too far.
I guess I'd, I'd like to say I, I feel very supportive of this, this piece of, of work that we've done. I'm, I am really concerned about the two percent because I, I know that just sitting here listening, I'm thinking, well, I want that option. So I'm going to go get that option. And, and I don't think I'm the only person who would, who would think that. And so I think there's a real potential of locking up the, the opportunity for people to, at some later point, want to do that. Thanks for answering those questions.
And allow me to respond briefly and say that, that, remember, regulatory programs like this are not one-shot and you're done forever kinds of things. And often, and certainly here, the city will learn from its experience. And nothing prevents the city, a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, from saying the, the two percent limit is not effectively being used. And we are going to massage this ordinance to, and adjust it so that that two percent limit or whatever limit set is more effectively used. And we won't anticipate how you do that now, but what I'm doing is assuring you that if that truly becomes a problem and a, a large portion of the two percent is just not getting used, the city has the ability to open up the ordinance and, and look at ways it can encourage that to happen. Yep.
Thank you. I have Ms. Nosler Beck, Ms. Dozeman, followed by Ms. Hoppy.
Thanks, Mayor. So I think this question is for Scott, Ken, or Patrick, whoever wants to take it. With the rollout of all of this, do, will this, because it's, you know, small businesses that people are running out of their homes, like, will this, this kind of education of, of how the program and the licensing is going to work, will that be run through the, like, through, like, the, like, economic develop, development kind of space? Or how are we going to be, like, know, letting people know that this is, this is happening? What's our kind of PR campaign strategy? And, and also with us, like, tightening that window between May and August, I think we're going to have to be really proactive. Like, I think it's going to take a lot of resources to make sure that people know this is, this is happening. So just kind of want to know more about that plan.
Yeah, I'll start. So this will be a, if this gets approved, it'll, it'll become a licensing issue and through the Administrative Services Department and licensing. And Ally Shek's been thoroughly involved in the planning for this. And there's an item on your agenda this evening, later this evening, to approve funding for a contract with Lodging Revs, which is a company that helps cities manage the licensing process. So, you know, if this does pass tonight, even if you do shorten up the timeframe, it's still a six-month process between, basically from tonight and May first. It's still, or August first is when, when the, the deadline would be if you do shorten it up. So there's still a good six-month process to get the word out. But with that, I'll leave it to maybe Ally if she wants to speak to plans on, on how we're going to communicate this with the, with, with the public.
Thanks, Mr. Goff. And I'll also invite Mr. Cutler to join me. But I'll just start by saying, yeah, in fact, the first thing that we have drafted is an article to go in connections that we will tweak tomorrow. The deadline was really last week. With any of the decisions that you make tonight, if this ordinance passes. And of course, that's the one piece of communication that goes to everybody's mailbox. And staff will begin working on a, a sort of a landing page which will direct everybody, you know, which will direct the public to that. And we'll continue to build that out as we have more information. Meanwhile, the implementation team, which involves Scott here and Bridget Borak, our digital communications specialist, and Mark Colvin, the finance manager, will start working with Lodging Revs later this week, again, if you, if you approve this tonight, to begin work on the implementation on their end. And they will actually direct mail and directly contact any listed STRs in Wheat And they will actually direct mail and directly contact any listed STRs in Wheat Ridge. So for communication with the hosts, while we will do broad communication and outreach, Lodging Revs will actually start a direct campaign to the hosts, inviting them and telling them exactly what to do to license. Scott, do you want to chime in on that because you were involved in the RFP process?
Sure, yeah, to expand on that a little bit. So Lodging Revs is a service that would basically handle a lot of the administration tasks. So contact with the property owners, what else? I guess the actual like form that someone would fill out, they would actually process that and then send it to staff to approve. So there's a lot of the administration tasks that normally a city would be handling are actually going to be managed by Lodging Revs. And then as far as the communication goes, we're working on a webpage on the city's website as a landing page, which the connections article will have a link to. That will basically be, and frequently asked questions, both for a host, but also if you're a neighbor of a short-term rental, where you go if you have a complaint? You know, why didn't my neighbor notify me? All those sorts of questions will be on there, as well as what the expectations are of a host and basically explaining that 20-page ordinance and narrowing it down to something that's easy to read for the community. So we'll have a host guide on there as well as a neighbor guide. So those are kind of the main things. And then, yeah, as soon as May 1st hits, Lodging Revs would be contacting everyone that has a currently listed short-term rental in the city saying, Wheat Ridge has passed this ordinance, go ahead and go get registered. And these are the dates that you have to get registered by.
Thank you. I have Ms. Dozeman next, followed by Ms. Hoppe and then Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you. So I think I kind of want to get into the weeds with a few questions. As far as like how we came to the decisions, as far as like the age and not allowing 18-year-olds to rent short-term rentals. And then one of the speakers spoke to like a short-term rental accommodation tax as opposed to our 10% lodgers' tax, which if we are going to do a one-night minimum, I could understand why we would treat them like hotels. But if we're going to have stricter regulations as far as, you know, a two-night minimum because it's in residential areas, then I think maybe looking at lowering that tax could be beneficial. And so I guess I want to know kind of the background and the research that was done as far as limiting age, the cost of licensing and annual fees and like in comparison to cities around us. And then also like, and this is the first time I'm hearing about an STR accommodation tax as opposed to a lodger's tax. So maybe could somebody from staff touch on that as well?
I can start. I'll touch on the age and the fees, but then I'm not equipped to answer the tax question, so I'll leave that to someone else. And as far as age goes, the 21-plus limit was actually something that council requested at one of the study sessions and that's why we included it in the ordinance. Wouldn't really affect it either way if we left it in or took it out. That's up to you all. And then as far as the fees, I got, were you speaking to the annual fee of the $200? Okay. Yeah, so in our research, we wanted to look at various communities, but also how it would impact our budget and how we could pay for the administration of the program. So there is a really wide range of application fees and some of it's actually based on the income that the short-term rental brings in. And sometimes you have places like Boulder where it's, it is valid every four years. So there's a really wide range. Ours is probably on a little bit of the high end, but it would allow the city to recoup costs for the administration of the program. And it's based on twice the average nightly rate of short-term rentals in the city. And based on some preliminary research, short-term rentals in Wheat Ridge are about $100 a night. So if you rent it out for two nights, that's the application fee for the year. And then if, you know, so that's kind of where we landed on that number. Obviously, that's not in the ordinance, so that's actually a policy decision that we have to make as a city, what we want that fee to look like.
And we also did receive, I believe, direction from City Council that the fees for the license would cover our administrative costs. And I believe this is fairly close to that. And I could speak to the tax a little bit. I think Mr. Giattulio mentioned in his public comments that the city's lodger's tax is 10%. And it was, it was originally 5%. And then I think in 1995, the voters did improve an increase of 5%. So for a total of 10, and 5% is restricted specifically for police and code enforcement activities that, from impacts of our hotels. So a combination tax, any new tax that the city council wants to consider would require a table vote of our residents. So you'd want to be very careful with that, but I believe, I just texted Mr. Dahl and I think he confirmed you could potentially lower, since you're not, don't create a new tax. You continue to use lodger's tax, but you could potentially lower it for short-term rentals and make it a smaller rate, lower than 10% if you'd like. I believe that would not require a table vote. I'd recommend that instead of doing some new type of tax because that would probably require a table vote.
Okay, thank you for that background information. You know, I know we had had a discussion around, you know, 18-year-olds and them wanting to find a place to potentially party. And I think, believe, somebody spoke to a graduation party, so I kind of understand that. But, you know, this is something that we have worked on for a really long time and I think it's hard for us kind of all to see the final product because nobody, I think, is happy, you know, 100% happy with one thing or another. And I think that's the hard part about policymaking is no matter what, somebody's going to be upset. I'm just excited that we're actually, you know, done kicking this can down the road and we're finally going to be addressing it. And I think you've covered all the questions I had. I have a couple other notes, so if anything else comes to mind, I'll ask.
Thank you. I have Ms. Hoppe, Ms. Hulteen, and Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, so I just wanted to clarify. I believe that the cap doesn't begin until after the grace period ends. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the way the ordinance is written now, the grace period and the cap both end on November 1st. But our recommendation was to have that be more tiered so that you've got ordinance effective date May 1st, end of the registration grace period, and beginning of lodger's tax August 1st, and then cap November 1st. And that allows staff to kind of catch up to all of the stuff and then start tracking the cap numbers in November.
And in November, in November, we could look at everybody that's registered. We could potentially be over the 2% and be in a waitlist. But even though we're over the 2%, we're not knocking people off of the list. We're just starting the waitlist. And once we get below the 2% is when we start taking people off, from, moving people up from the list into regulation. Is that correct?
That's correct. So if the cap is reached by, on November 1st, I mean, there's a possibility that maybe in one district, it actually would be already over the 2% before November 1st. All those people prior to November 1st would still be allowed and get approved, but then the cap would take effect and then we'd have to wait for that number to drop back down below the maximum before we would approve another license. So, yeah, it would be just based on a one-in-one-out from there on. And we have the ability to track all that through Lodging Revs and our own tracking.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Hulteen, Mr. Urban, and Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mayor Strucker. I have a couple of questions. Do, do we get, how many complaints has the city received about short-term rentals? Is that data that we have?
I don't, maybe we all could chip in, chirp in here a little bit, but I think we probably all might get different phone calls. But I can tell you, as city manager, I've only heard of maybe one or two, honestly, in my time. I'm not sure if the Community Development Department or Police Department receives any more than I do.
Patrick, I would say the same thing. I mean, I've had definitely a handful over the years. It's been a very small number.
Okay. And then there've been a couple of comments about revisiting the previous consensus about not having a minimum night stay. Do we have any other type of businesses that we regulate like that, that we tell them? You know, like if I, if I ran a massage business in my house, would there be a limitation as to how many people could come and go?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know, Ken or Scott, did that sound familiar to you? I don't think so.
So we
Not that I can think of.
Home occupation, there are some rules around home occupations. You can only have one employee in a home occupation setting and one vehicle that's associated with the business. So there's things like that, which are maybe similar to this.
Okay, so I can, I could run a home occupation, you know, anyone could get their home occupation license and have clients coming and going all day as long as they're within those. So we allow businesses within neighborhoods that have people coming and going as long as they're within the allowance of that?
Under certain restrictions, yes. But I don't believe there's any restrictions on how many customers they could have on a daily basis.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Urban, and then Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as I look at this, this is a whole new article within Chapter 11 and that's pretty heavy lifting. And I think that as I kind of look forward to tonight's vote, that it's important that we do what we can to bring this to a vote tonight, to get this on the books. And, you know, within six months to a year, I think it's appropriate to revisit the licensing fees and the revenues that we've received under the lodger tax to see what sort of economic, both the impact and the cost have been over the past year. And I think that's appropriate to do as, you know, we're trying to enact an entire article here. And I think it's, there are some parts that aren't necessarily perfect, but I think based on what I've seen, the work that's been done by all the parties involved, that we need to support this moving forward this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I thought of my other question. Could somebody in staff just speak to like the inspection process and what that might look like? Yeah.
I can take that one. Mentioned a little bit earlier, there's not an inspection process associated with short-term rentals. The host would have to certify that they're providing certain safety features, egress, things of that nature. And that's it. The ordinance does have a piece in it saying that the city does reserve the right to conduct an inspection. And that's basically on a complaint basis. If we get complaints from a renter or a neighbor that there's like serious life safety issues, and that's the case now, we already do reserve the right to do inspections if there's a life safety complaint. Ken, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, Scott. And under the business licensing framework, we have that ability. If we have just cause to conduct an inspection, we can do that.
But we're not just doing routine inspections of short-term rentals. There's, I mean, probably 99.5% of them will never have any sort of inspection.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question on the license. Does the license go with the property? Or is that something that if, if somebody who owns a short-term rental license property, can, can they sell that along with their property? Or does that just revert to the next person in mind?
It goes with the owner, not with the property. So if someone moves or sells their property, the license is forfeited.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do support this ordinance and I am going to vote on this. And I, I think it's fair to give it the six months and see how that plays out. But this has been worked on for so long that I think this is a good start. Thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a quick question about the bed and breakfast section of Section 26608, whether or not that particular section will go away at some point? Or is there anything within that that would conflict with what we're doing here? Or what's our plan for that particular section?
I can address that. Yeah, so section, now I'm trying to find it in the code. The section you just mentioned on bed and breakfast does currently exist and we're actually proposing to modify it slightly in this ordinance to align with the definitions as far as short-term rentals go. A bed and breakfast is really more of a commercial use, so it requires, it allows up to four rooms. It requires meal services. It allows signage. And it's, it's a much more intensive land use than a short-term rental. So in our mind, we didn't necessarily get rid of that land use. It's just a different category, more like a hotel or boutique hotel than, than a short-term rental. So it's just a different category.
And we currently don't have any listed in Wheat Ridge that I'm aware of, correct?
We don't have any, but it is still in our code if someone ever wanted to operate one.
Thank you. I don't see any more questions. I had one for you, Mr. Cutler. Is it possible to have more than one short-term rental at one property?
It's based on the dwelling unit. So I guess that depends on how the land is subdivided. I'm trying to think of an example. I mean, I guess if there's a duplex and you own both sides, you're allowed to live in one side and rent it as a partial home and then rent the other side as a whole home rental. But a duplex is actually a separate parcel, like each side is a separate parcel.
But if you had a single-family home, would you be able to operate two short-term rentals out of one single-family home?
No, you could not. It's based on the dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller, I see your hand down there, but I'm sorry, I need to restrict this to council members. So thank you. Ms. Weaver?
Scott, I'm sorry. I just didn't quite understand that, that answer that you gave the mayor. So if I have two rooms, I cannot rent both rooms? I can only rent one room?
You could rent both rooms, but to one group. So you couldn't operate like a hostel where you rent it to separate, each room to a separate individual? You could rent out multiple rooms in your house, but to one group?
Okay, that's, that's pretty significant. I hope everybody understands that one, that, that that is a big thing in Airbnb that people will have multiple rooms and rent them to different people. And I don't have an opinion on that. I just wanted to clarify that, that that is one person or one group per home on any given night. That's what I'm understanding?
That's correct. And that's something that was discussed at study session, specifically prohibiting dormitory-style rentals where you do rent to different bedrooms. So just wanted to make
Understood, understood, thanks.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for the city treasurer.
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask, what kind, do we know what kind of lodger tax we're receiving right now as far as revenue? And if there's any other sort of input you might have?
Thank you. I don't have that number handy. I was just thinking, I need to look that up right about now. I would like to mention that in the city of Denver, the lodger's tax is about 10.5% plus an additional 1% to cover some bonds. So 10% Wheat Ridge tax is really not out of line. And also, the costs being two nights of lodging for a typical unit is really, I think, very reasonable. And those kind of high standards for those lodging and inspections and permits, I think, improves the quality of the rentals that we'll see in Wheat Ridge. But I can get back to you on the actual tax amount that we received this year.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question, please.
Okay, the question has been called without objection. Ms. Hoppe, may I please have a motion on Agenda Item Number Three?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 02-20-
Ms. Hoppe, before you do that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 02-2021 in ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to adopt the new Article 14 and Chapter 11 child short-term rental licenses and in connection therewith, making conforming amendments in Chapters 22 and 26 on second reading and that it take effect on May 1st of 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hutchinson. I will recognize Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make an amendment to the, to the ordinance, not to the motion, but just an amendment to the ordinance. to the ordinance, not to the motion, but just an amendment to the ordinance. And I'd like that amendment to read, add a new subsection 26-645D-7 to read, "Short-term rentals located in any residential zone district shall be restricted to a minimum two-night stay per individual reservation."
All right, there's an amendment to the motion. Is there a second on the amendment? If you would like to second it, please raise your hand. Second by Ms. Hoppie. We will now go to discussion on the amendment. Ms. Hoppie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would just like to say that the amount of work that has been done across multiple departments, with the city staff, the city attorney, research, coordination, city council, the many study sessions we've had and the one bazillion consensuses that have brought this together. I really appreciate everybody's really hard work on this. From the beginning, it was, we had something that was happening in our community that was not being regulated but not necessarily allowed. And then we had members in our community who didn't want short-term rentals at all. So we were really far apart. And I think we've done some really good work. One of the main concerns that I've heard from the community members that are non-STR owners is that the impact in their community, they would like to have some way to lower the impact in their community. And so the reason why I seconded Councilmember Urban's amendment is because I do believe that a two-night minimum in residential zoning does lower that impact in our residential zones. In our higher commercial zones, mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use commercial, C1, that impact is hardly, is not even, it's not even an impact because of their, because of their makeup and their, you know, because they're more commercial. So that's why I support this amendment.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you. So we, you know, we've heard requests about the one-night minimum stay. The consensus we reached at our last city council was to move forward with no minimum stay. And, and the reason, I'm just, I'm concerned, and we're presenting an incredibly regulatory environment for short-term rentals. We're, and I believe what we have here is, as best as we can compromise between, as Ms. Hoppie said, two very different spectrums of people who didn't want it at all and people who don't want any regulation. The ability for short-term rentals, if we want those to be quality rentals, their ability to bring in people is going to be negatively impacted by not allowing one-night stays. And, and I speak a little bit from experience. I, I am a frequent short-term, I'm an Airbnb junkie. It's pretty much all I stay in when I travel. And a lot, and I would say probably 80% of my stays are one-night because I'm traveling through somewhere. And we have a lot of, as we heard, ski traffic. So we're going to be missing opportunity to capture, capture the revenue and opportunity for our short-term rental hosts to be able to operate their businesses in a way that allows them to maintain and be good, be good house. You know, we have a lot of concern. I think we don't get a lot of complaints about it. And I realize that there are a couple of bad apples in our city, and I hope that this regulation really cuts that down. But we don't regulate anywhere else in our city how many people can come and go. And ultimately, it doesn't impact the number of, like, if you have somebody staying one night or two nights, it's still, you know, cars coming and going on the street. So, I mean, I hear the concerns about that, but it's just not something we regulate anywhere else in our regulations. And I feel here that it's, it's just stepping a little bit into a zone that is, I mean, I'm hearing people, but I don't think it's going to impact how many cars are coming and going in the neighborhood. So I don't support this.
I have Ms. Hoppie on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate Councilwoman Hulteen's comment. We did, we did have a consensus to not make it two nights, but we also had a consensus prior to that to make it two nights. So, you know, this has kind of been a little bit of a back and forth. And with all of the different study sessions, I understand that people will, you know, change their minds. I personally, I don't have a personal opinion about this. However, elected to represent my district, and my district is very highly impacted more than other districts about short-term rentals. And the majority of the citizens in my district have said that they would like a two-night minimum. So I am supporting this in support of the people in my district.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the amendment. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think to speak to the overall regulation package that we're looking at here, I was looking at it from what other cities have done and the way that we've interacted with both sides on this. I think this is a fairly, you know, level playing field. I don't think that this is necessarily onerous. I would say from my background in regulatory affairs, it's easier to strip away regulations down the road as we, you know, reexamine this as opposed to continue to lay regulations on. And so as it relates to the two-night minimum, if this is something that within six months to a year, we find that it's untenable or unworkable, we can revisit this. But I think as it stands right now, it's better to start with a two-night minimum and then step back from that if down the road we find that was too onerous. Thank you.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with the two-night stay. Some short-term rentals are in very short blocks. They're not long blocks. These are businesses that are in neighborhoods where people live and have children around. So I don't think it's unreasonable to have a two-night stay. This is a business in a neighborhood. And I also agree that District One has a bunch of short-term rentals, and they've been going on for years and years. This isn't new. And people are just kind of, you know, they want the regulation and they want it to where their neighborhood is safe. People come and go all the time. And when we have somebody step up and say that he's concerned about his children, I think that is an issue. I am supporting the two-day stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion. Ms. Nosler, back.
Mayor, I'm not going to be supporting the two-night stay minimum. I agree with what Councilmember Hulteen has mentioned. As a frequent user of VRBO and Airbnb, I utilize this as an overnight stay a lot. The other thing that I think is important to, to make sure we're aware of is that we did hear from a lot of our folks during the Citizens' Rights to Speak that, you know, this, this is a pretty convoluted and big ordinance that we're passing. And it, and it is, it's all the work that we've put into this. But I, I don't want to add something that's going to hinder people from doing business, especially during the times that we're in, in COVID. People need options for housing right now. So I'm not going to be supporting the two-night minimum.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the amendment. There's no more discussion on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, and this is to make a two-night minimum stay in residential zones, all those in favor signify by raising your hand so that the clerk can see it. And will the clerk please record the votes?
We have five to three motion carries.
Okay, well, I'm going to, all those opposed to the motion, raise your hand.
We have three members opposed, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The amendment, the amendment succeeds. So we will go back to the main motion as amended. Is there discussion on the main motion as amended, Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to propose that we adopt staff recommendation to amend this so that the ordinance goes into effect May 1st and there is 90 days to obtain licensing. And after 90 days, both licensing is enforced as well as lodger's taxes collected starting August 1st.
Okay, so am I to understand that this is an amendment to the motion to incorporate a different timeframe?
Yep. So, and I don't have the specific language because it was actually mentioned by Mr. Cutler in his presentation that staff, I'd been working with staff this week on that. And is there a language that's available for that?
I can offer language from the slide if you would like, Councilwoman Hulteen.
Thank you.
So you would be making a motion for an amendment that we would follow the recommended, May 1st registration begins, August 1st registration grace period ends, and collection of sales tax starts. And November 1st, the district cap takes effect.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend that we follow staff's recommendation that the regulations go into effect May 1st and that requirements for licensing go into effect August 1st. Collection of lodger's tax goes into effect August 1st and that protection for the cap, or the cap goes into effect November 1st.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Mr. Stites, would you second that?
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure I know where in the ordinance this amendment is going to appear.
Okay.
And I'm assuming it's going to be in Section 11-506. Do we need to add some language there? Or can somebody help me with that? We do, of course, have the effective date, Section 12, that's, that's, that's the May and November, but.
Jerry, I have it in front of me if that would help. So I don't believe it would affect the effective date, which is Section 12. The effective date is still May 1st and the cap is still going to take effect November 1st. So I think we leave that. But yeah, you're right. It would be 11-506. And what I, when I was looking at, it would be a change in Section 1, changing that date to August 1st. And then in Section 3, changing to, starting first and removing the on the earlier because then the lodger's tax deadline is firm on August 1st as opposed to at time of application or earlier.
Okay, so I'm right in thinking that the amendment would amend Section 11-506 for Sub 1 to replace November 1 with August 1. And Sub 3 to replace November 1 with August 1. Is that correct, Scott?
Yes, and get rid of on the earlier of either.
Ah, right. So we'll just say on November 1 in Sub 3.
August 1st.
Excuse me, yes, August 1st in Sub 3.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And to clarify, and maybe I need to make this more explicit, in paragraph 2, it's referencing that if hosts are not licensed by May 2nd, that they, that they would be in violation. And I'm proposing that that 90 days is a grace period. And the way it's written in Section 2, it does not read like a grace period.
Correct. I do think we need to address that as well, Jerry.
Yeah, the way to address that in Sub 2 would be, I think, in the third line says, "Short-term rental host fails to obtain a license prior to August 1st, comma, the host shall be required to wait, excuse me, up, yes, prior to August 1st, the host shall be required to wait." Does that work?
It does.
I think we also have to address that the first sentence says, "Short-term rental host wishing to commence operations on and after May 2nd shall obtain a short-term license prior to commencing operations." And I think that prior to commencing operations implies that they wouldn't be able to continue operating if they have been. So if we're treating it kind, I mean, we've been kind of a don't ask, don't tell state for a while. And I just think it's going to be really clean for us if we're just asking everyone to get in compliance by August 1st. So I propose that we also strike the prior to commencing operations in that first.
So Sub 2 would be shorter and would read, "Short-term rental host wishing to commence operations on and after May 2nd shall obtain a short-term rental license on or before August 1st." If they fail to obtain a license prior to August 1st, they have to wait one year before reapplying. Is that what you wanted to read?
Yeah, and I think Section 1 says that. I think Section 2, you just need to say, if they fail to obtain a license by August 1st, they cannot apply for one year.
Mr. Goff, may I just make a clarification here?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Thank you, sorry. And Mr. Cutler, if you can help out, I think the intent of Section 2, Section 1 applies to folks that are operating an STR now, prior to the effective date, right? And then Section 2 is, if you haven't been, you know, we're giving sort of a little bit more of a grace period to those that are already in operation versus a new, if you've never operated an STR before, you need to get a license before you start, is the point of that section. Did I get that right, Scott?
You did. And I think the point of our amendment, though, is that we're kind of treating those the same now. So both those sections, they would be required to be registered by August 1st, regardless of if you were operating before the ordinance effective date or after. I think, I think that's the intent. So we're not treating those groups separately.
Can we strike Section 2?
I think so.
Well, I think what we need to double-check is that the one year, the, the sort of the punishment, if you like, is elsewhere in the ordinance because that was something that was important to you all at the last conversation.
It's in Section 1 also.
Oh, true.
Okay.
I think then they become duplicate.
I've got a parliamentary problem or issue to square up. We, you started, Ms. Hulteen, with Amendment Number 2, that we have a second with Mr. Stites, but we've, we've machinated the language quite a bit at this point.
Should we take a break, Mr. Mayor? It's nine o'clock and then we can figure this out offline.
You know, we're due for a break. If we want to do one before we, before we do that, sure. Why don't we, why don't we take a 10-minute break and come back at 10 minutes after nine? And we will, if Mr. Dahl can work on some of this language, maybe we can pick this up at that time. Okay, so we'll recess for 10 minutes. ... being the meeting of the council. And when, when we left, our attorney was, was working on some coordinating language for the second amendment. Mr. Dahl?
Well, I, I haven't succeeded yet. What, what I think we, we need to do is break this into, I think we need to get away from the language on the page for a moment and discuss what regulatory elements we want to have happen. Then we can figure out the language that makes that happen because the, the language is trapping us and I think impeding our ability to think that through.
Okay, then I would like to go back to Ms. Hulteen who originated the language. And, and can you clarify the concepts? And after Ms. Hulteen, we have Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the concepts that I'm proposing include requiring between May 1 and August 1 for anyone operating a short-term rental to get licensed, to apply for a license in that 90-day period. That includes pre-existing or existing short-term rental hosts and anyone who wants to start a new one. They have to be licensed by August 1. Starting August 1, we will collect lodger's tax for all licensed. Starting August 1, if you're operating a short-term rental property without a license, then you're shut down and not allowed to reapply for a year. And then keeping the, the cap at November 1, that the cap will go into effect November 1.
The cap, oh, right, right, the cap. All right.
Jerry, this is Ken. I mean, I, I certainly heard that motion loud and clear. I mean, do you think we can accept that as the direction and then as a staff follow up and work on the codifying language? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, I, I think we can if, if I can repeat it. I do want to hear people say, or the maker of the motion and the second agree with the characterization a couple of times so that when it, you can understand why. So that when it, it does get approved and we do write it up, we're, we're doing what we have been directed to do. And let's, let's do the, the elements one more time and then I'll suggest a motion that directs the staff to, to, to write, write that section. What I heard was a, a three-part rule. The first rule being that all short-term rentals must become licensed. Whether operating now or not, must become, must become licensed by August 1, 2021. Whether you are an existing operator, whether you're presently in existence or whether you choose to be, become a short-term rental operator prior to August 1, you have to have registered by then. If you, all operations, all persons operating short-term rental must be licensed by August 1, 2021, or be subject to enforcement under the, under the ordinance, which would be to be old you have to shut down because you're unlicensed. And number 3, the requirement of the ordinance imposing a 2% cap shall not apply until November 1. Did I miss a subtlety there?
Additionally, that August 1 lodger, everyone will be subjected to lodger's tax.
Right. You have to be both licensed and you will be collecting lodger's tax if you're in the short-term rental business as of August 1.
Correct. Collecting, not remitting, because you won't remit until September 20th. So just say collecting.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that anyone operating an unlicensed short-term rental after August 1 will be subject to, they will be asked to stop, to cease, and they will have to wait one year before they can apply and get a legitimate license and operate legitimately, meaning forever after August 1 of 2021. So if that doesn't happen for three years from now, that's still, that is still the consequence of operating without a license.
If, if after August 1, you're found to be operating without a license, and that's, after August 1 could be August 2, could be September of 2022, whenever you're found to be operating without a license, if that is, if that takes place after August 1, 2021, then not only are you subject to enforcement and you have to be shut down, but you may not reapply for a license for a year from the date you were discovered.
Yes, thank you.
I see. Okay. All right, a proper motion, I think. I'm sorry, Mr. Urban, I think has a question.
Mr. Urban?
On that, would it be the person that cannot reapply or the property? So if, if I screw up and then I give the application to my wife, can she apply for it? Or?
We've had that.
Scott.
Like Scott indicated earlier, that licenses go with the person, not property. So I think it would be the, the person found to be operating would be the language I would use.
So you could give it to your wife then, as Mr. Urban said, to reapply?
And I think that almost has to be consistent with the approach that the, the whole scheme here takes, which is that it's persons who obtain the license, not properties. If, if we were to have to inject a subtlety, then, then that will complicate this a little more.
Right.
Mr. Cutler? I wanted to clarify that a little bit because it's based on the property owner, not the person operating. So if there's two people on the deed, a husband and wife, then neither could reapply because it's based on ownership, not based on an individual.
So if the property is owned in an LLC, and would they need to be members or managers of that LLC? Or would there be any, would you be looking that far into it? Or can they all apply for license?
They would have to apply under the, if, it has to match what's on the deed. So if it's owned by an LLC, then the LLC manager would have to submit that information. And if there's four people in an LLC and they submit the same LLC information, then they would be denied.
Okay.
We might consider as a part of this section directing the, because it's the treasurer, I think, that is the licensing authority here, directing the treasurer to adopt such rules and regulations as necessary to implement this particular section, understanding that that maybe no rules and regulations will be necessary, but if we get back patterns coming in that are difficult to navigate under this new system, it would be good if the treasurer had that authority. Or we could come back to council for amendments, but I, I think it might be helpful. So I restate what I think the motion is?
Yes.
Yes, why don't you do that?
Great. A proper motion would be direct the city attorney and city staff to prepare a revision of section 11-506 of the ordinance. of section 11-506 of the ordinance to provide as follows. First, that both existing short-term rental operators and persons wishing to commence operations of short-term rentals in the city must obtain a license and commence collection of lodger's tax on or before August 1st, 2021. And in the event such operations do not obtain such licenses on or before August 1st, they are subject to enforcement under the Chapter 11, which, by the way, includes revocation and all sorts of orders. And as well, are not permitted to reapply for a short-term rental license until one year after having been found to be operating without such a license after August 1st, 2021. Third, that the requirement elsewhere in the ordinance, the section for which I'll find, imposing a 2% cap per council district shall not take effect until November 1st, 2021. And lastly, that to the extent necessary, the city treasurer is authorized to propagate rules and regulations to implement the council's direction in this section 11-506. Scott, what did I miss?
The the cap is not changing based on this amendment. It's already proposed to take effect November 1st, and that's in section 12, the effective date, so it wouldn't be changing as part of this.
That's somewhere else and doesn't need to be in the motion.
Correct.
If if there are no objections to that motion, someone probably should say so moved and we can see how it goes.
Ms. Hulteen, I'd like to recognize you then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to direct staff to write the motion as described by Mr. Dahl.
Okay, and Mr. Stites, you had the second, and do you second that also? Okay, so we have a motion on amendment number two and a second by Mr. Stites. Do we have discussion on the amendment? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the amendment number two, please raise your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Seven in favor.
All those opposed?
You say seven?
I thought seven. Can I see hands, please, again?
Hands one more time, up close and personal.
I'm sorry, we have eight in favor, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So we have now, we are back to the main motion as amended by amendment one and amendment two. Is there further discussion on the main motion as amended? Okay, then we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as amended by amendments number one and number two, please raise your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Is there any further work that we need to do on agenda item number three? Okay, well, thank you very much. That was a lot of, a lot of good work by the council and our our staff on this one. Thank you very much for for bearing with it. We will go now to agenda item number four and ask Ms. Weaver to please introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions.
Why don't you read the issue statement also?
Okay. As of March 2nd, 2021, the terms of 20 current board and commission members of the City of Wheat Ridge will expire. Included with that, two vacancies in Parks and Recreation Commission Districts Two and Districts Four and the Cultural Commission District Four with one at-large position. These positions are to be filled or reappointed.
Okay, thank you very much. A little complicated there, but I think we'll straighten it out. I would like to recognize Ms. Hoppe for the for the motion to appoint members in District One.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be making all of my motions as a group. I move to appoint Dan Bradford to the Board of Adjustment. I move to appoint Celia Daly to the Cultural Commission. I move to appoint Jerry DeTulio to the Liquor Licensing Authority. I move to appoint Cambria Rollo to the Parks and Rec Commission. And I move to appoint Ari Kirchheimer to the Planning Commission, all terms ending on 3/2/2024.
And do we have a second by Ms. Hutchinson? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. In District Number, I'd like to recognize Mr. Urban.
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Megan Scheckemberg to the Cultural Commission, term expiring March 2nd, 2024. I move to appoint Anita Stites to the Liquor Licensing Authority, term expiring March 2nd, 2024, and appoint Karen Stanley to the Parks and Rec Commission, term expiring March 2nd, 2024.
Thank you. And do I have a second on that by Ms. Hulteen? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
I would like to recognize Councilmember Weaver for the nominations in District Three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Janet Bell to the Board of Adjustment, term ending 3/2/24. I move to appoint Ron Abo to the Building Code Advisory Board, term ending 3/2/24. I move to appoint Kim Saint Martin to the Cultural Commission, term ending 3/2/24. I also move to appoint Edward Volk to the License Liquor Licensing Authority, term ending 3/2/24. And I move to appoint, reappoint Guy Namiak to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term ending 3/2/24.
Thank you. And do I have a second on those nominations? A second by Mr. Stites. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Dozeman for nominations to District Four positions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Michael Griffith to the Board of Adjustment, term ending 3/2/24. I move to appoint John Kello to the Building Code Advisory Board, term ending 3/2/24. I move to appoint Maria Garcia to the Cultural Commission, term ending 3/2/24. I move to appoint Michael Gay Betterton to the Liquor Licensing Authority, term ending 3/2/24. I move to appoint Pat Severa to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term ending 3/2/23. And I move to appoint Janet Leo, reappoint Janet Leo to the Planning Commission, term ending 3/2/24.
Thank you. And do I hear a second? A second by Ms. Noslerbeck. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize the Councilmember Hoppe for an at-large appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Nancy Dreagani, the alternate to the Cultural Commission, term ending 3/2/24.
And do I see a hand to second that? Mr. Stites will second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number five. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to approve the appointment of District One's seat to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority Board. Do you want the issue?
Sure, if you would read that out, please.
The members of the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority are appointed by the mayor, subject to approval by the majority of the entire city council. The term for the District One seat currently held by Cheyenne Kinghorn expires March 2nd, 2021. Cheyenne Kinghorn has reapplied for term renewal and submitted a new application for this position.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the reappointment of Cheyenne Kinghorn to District One's seat of the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority Board.
Thank you. And I have a second by Ms. Weaver. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number six. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you. Motion to approve the appointment of the District Four seat to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority Board. The members of Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority are appointed by the mayor, subject to approval by a majority vote of the entire city council. The term for the District Four seat currently held by Chris Byrd expires March 2nd, 2021. Mr. Byrd has reapplied for term renewal and submitted a new application for this position.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman. May I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve the reappointment of Chris Byrd to the District Four seat of the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority Board.
And a second by Ms. Noslerbeck. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number seven. Ms. Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 10, 2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $13,450 for short-term rental program management. At issue, city council is considering an ordinance, we just approved an ordinance, to license and regulate short-term rentals. Staff conducted a competitive solicitation process to select a vendor to manage a portion of the licensing, compliance, and tax collection work. At this program, as this program has not been solidified at the time of the 2021 budget was developed, fees in the amount of $13,450 for the selected vendor lodging revs have not been appropriated.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do we have a further staff report on this?
We don't, unless the council has any questions.
Okay. I, before we go to questions of council, I will ask if there are any questions from members of the public. It is an opportunity to speak on this item, number seven. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand in the virtual format. Ms. Scheck, do we see anyone with raising their hand?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then we will close our public comment and go to questions from council, if we have any. Ms. Hulteen?
I have a question, and and this may be more for the vendor, but in the in the contract, it lists listing tractor tracker evidence capture every five minutes on non-compliant properties. Would anybody be able to clarify what that means?
Are you, sorry, did you see that in the fee timetable?
Yeah.
Is that we're looking at?
Yeah.
I mean, basically, what their their software does is it's, it's great. It's an AI program that scans a number of different sites, so, you know, Airbnb, VRBO, and to try and identify non-compliant property owners who we know are renting and and haven't licensed. So that's what that's talking about.
Okay.
So it's tough because it's like, I love to say it's, you know, it's, it's, I think it's probably more of an art than a science to some degree. And so in theory, what this will help us do is actually levy assessments for back lodger's tax against non-compliant businesses. But, you know, it's hard to say how accurate, how accurate that is, but we're excited about it.
Okay. And then my second question, it says online complaint form. So if there is a complaint, then it actually goes through lodging revs? And then they would follow up with the appropriate city staff department?
There is an online complaint form. There's a separate module, which is the hotline that we've, we've chosen at this point not not to implement, sort of something that will evaluate their performance. But from what we've heard from on reference checks, that, yeah, the online complaint form is is helpful in that it gets the complaint straight into the database, so we're able to match that against the properties and track it that way. So if somebody, so when they come to renew their license, we can pull up their history and understand the types of complaints that have been filed. Now, what I don't believe with with this level of service, no, we're not getting the 24-hour hotline where then the the person actually calls lodging revs to complain. So it would be, you know, we're going to, as Scott was alluding to earlier, at the moment, they're working on website text for, and just sort of general materials for neighbors. So if a neighbor, you know, so it's like, what to do, how do you complain? And if it's an emergency, then here's what you do. If it's really a code enforcement issue, then here's what you do. If it's, you know, and then here's, and then one of the options will be an online complaint form in a non-emergent situation.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Additional questions from staff on this item? Ms. Noslerbeck.
This kind of is what I was getting at before, when we were talking about the ordinance. Just the way that I read this was that what lodging revs does is, like, helps us gather the data that we need to understand and work with, like, the the STRs. But I just want to make sure that with all this, that the, you know, staff outreach, we have all of this going, this great data, that we're making the connect from the city to the short-term rental folks, you know, and not just counting on the program to to kind of that for us, but like, make sure that it's them working with the city, working with us, whoever, to to educate them about the program and also just be that interface. So anyway, I guess my question is just, what's the, what's the city doing in addition to this?
So we, one of the things we didn't mention earlier is we're going to put together a host guide that kind of, you know, talks about all of the 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 regulations, the whys, why are we doing this? How do you, how do you have an STR and be a really good neighbor? And then best practices. So we're going to put a host guide together. So like I said, we're going to have a nice, a nice webpage that lists resources for hosts and resources for for neighbors. And then, of course, what we'll do is promote that through all of our, across all of our platforms, all of our tools. And like I said, the first thing that will actually go out will be connections, because it happens to, it'll hit mailboxes March 15th, and we did not want to miss this opportunity to get into every single mailbox about the fact that this is, these are brand-new regulations, effective May 1. And, you know, it's really important for both hosts and neighbors to understand what their resources are. So you're absolutely right, lodging revs is really our our solution for licensing, understanding the the data around compliance and non-compliance and tax collection. And that's going to help a lot. That's going to help our efficiency, efficiency a lot. And but but you're right, the city still has the burden of the communication, absolutely.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments on this on this issue before we go to a a motion? Okay, Ms. Hulteen, a motion is now in order. I I mean, yes, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution 10, 2021, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $13,450 for short-term rental program management.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Weaver. Is there discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And will the clerk please record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will now move to agenda item number eight. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, Resolution, uh, eleven dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-one general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the facilitation of the Race and Equity Task Force. At issue, in September twenty twenty, city council directed staff to develop a Race and Equity Task Force to review city policies and services that may contribute to discrimination. As part of that discussion, city council also provided direction for a professional facilitator to support the task force. The cost of the facilitation in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars was not appropriated in time for the adoption of the twenty twenty-one budget.
Thank you very much, uh, Mister Goff, do you have any further staff presentation on this item?
Mary Ann Shillen, you have anything else to add? Nope. Just to be accurate.
Um, before we go to, uh, questions of council, I will open this up to the public. If you wish to, um, speak on, uh, agenda item number eight, this is your opportunity, please raise your hand in the virtual format, and we will bring you into the meeting. Uh, Ms. Shek, do we see anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item?
Sorry, I can't get the mic on, no, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, then we will close our, uh, public comment on this item, uh, and open it up to questions from council. We have questions on this item before we go to a motion, Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um, so I see that the facilitation is for four months. Um, can you, can somebody from staff tell me like how many sessions that covers, or like what services are covered?
Yes, thank you, so that will cover the facilitation for the full, um, task force meetings, which were anticipated to be about ninety minutes each for the first four months. The direction from city council was to have a facilitator to help the group get started, and so we thought that the first four months would be would be really great for that. Um, so that will include the preparation with me, um, and city staff in a in advance of each of the task force meetings, and then as well facilitation of those meetings.
Okay, so.
Eight meetings over those four months.
Eight over the course of that, and then the intention is that the task force would be able to be fairly self-sufficient following that, although we do have the option to request the, um, facilitator to pop in from time to time of any additional support.
Okay, and so I guess that was my question is if that cost will cover it, because I saw in their packet that it says, um, strategic guidance to your task force for up to twelve months.
Yes, so if you notice in the four-month scope of work, it covers, um, about eighteen thousand five hundred with the option to include, um, so it's a not to exceed twenty-two-five if we wanted to have eight additional one-hour sessions with the facilitator, and that's up to the level of progress in need of the facilit, of the task force.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, is there any, uh, additional discussion before we go, uh, to a motion? Okay, uh, Mister Stites, may I have a motion on agenda item number eight?
Yes, Mister Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number Eleven dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution amending the fiscal twenty twenty-one general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred for the facilitation of the Race and Equity Task Force.
And who would like to second this, uh, Ms. Hoppy? So we have a motion and a second, is there discussion on the motion? Uh, seeing none, we'll go to a vote, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand, and will the clerk please, um, record the votes?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Uh, that completes our regular agenda, uh, we would like to move now to City Managers Matters, Mister Goff.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor, uh, just one quick item, uh, if you if you noticed in the Wheat Ridge uh, Speaks portal this evening, there was a comments, um, question from a resident asking about the Lutheran Legacy Campus. Um, and I think his comment was, he thought that, uh, he heard the campus, that a developer had purchased the campus and was ready to start building something, um, that's not the case at this point. Um, and we 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 will also have a story in the connections that goes out again, um, mid-March. So, um, we'll have more information that, again, hits every mailbox. But what's happening right now, as as you know, city council Lutheran, um, is moving their hospital to the Clay Creek Crossing Development, and they're gonna start construction here later this year. And city staff is also working with, uh, S C L Lutheran on the, what they're calling their legacy campus, the current current campus, to develop a master plan. Um, and that's gonna involve, uh, community input, and city council provided some names for to put together a stakeholder group in in cooperation with S C L Lutheran. I believe today they they were looking at those names and and selecting that stakeholder group. But the this first process will be about eight months, this, um, starting, um, in the in March, and involving that stakeholder group, involving meetings with the public to determine what, um, what the public and the city and S C L would like that current campus to develop into. Um, we do know that the the hospice, Collier Hospice will stay on the current campus, maybe some of the medical office buildings. Uh, but we really are looking for inputs, um, to develop a master plan, uh, the master plan will come back to city council for approval. And then, um, before any development can happen, um, a rezoning will will have to happen on the on the property. And, um, Lutheran, S C L Lutheran still owns the property, it hasn't been sold, but they are looking at selling it at some point, so there is no no developer, um, currently in the mix. It's, uh, it's still in the planning processes. So just wanted to make sure everybody heard that, and again, we'll get some information out in the, uh, connections newsletter, so hopefully, um, everybody in the city will see that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mister Goff, uh, City Attorneys Matters, Mister Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much, we will go to elected officials matters, and we will start with, if I get the right thing, um, I normally start with our clerk, Mister Kirkpatrick, but I would like to, uh, say that Mister Kirkpatrick was not, was under the weather tonight, and we've had, uh, our deputy clerk, Mister Eaton with us. Uh, we wish Mister Kirkpatrick well, and, uh, Mister Eaton, are there any, uh, any words that you'd like to say tonight?
I echo your thoughts, Mister Mayor, and I wish him, you know, uh, early recovery and happy trails.
Okay, and thank you for so much for your service tonight, too, you've done a great job. Uh, we will go to our treasurer, Mister Miller, is Mister Miller still with us? He was with us earlier, but I don't know if he's here. Okay, he may have, uh, signed off, uh, we will next go to Ms. Nosler Beck.
Mayor, um, real quick, I wanted to thank staff and everybody on council and everybody who attended the, um, retreat. It was great this weekend, I learned a lot, and I'm really excited about, um, the agenda items that we put forward. Um, so special thanks for everybody for putting that together. Um, also, um, we mentioned this earlier, but with the Rocky Mountain Bottling Plant, um, putting out their, um, letter to the community and neighbors um, about the wall that's going up, um, you know, I am also available to to come and speak. Um, if anybody wants to invite me to talk to their H O A, or um, if you just want to give me a call and learn a little bit more about the project and what's going on there. Um, so please, you know, reach out, um, if you have questions, thanks.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Dozeman?
Thank you, so I think my connection might be a little off, um, but I just also wanted to thank everybody for, uh, the retreat. I felt like it was a a very productive conversation and and, you know, it was really nice to all, to be able to gather, um, in person, even, you know, if we were socially distanced, and it's not quite what we're used to, but, um, it was really great to see everybody. And we didn't really get a chance to talk about it at the retreat, um, and some, if staff could maybe roll out some details as to what it would look like for returning to in-person, what kind of a timeframe we're looking at, and under what parameters. And I'd really like to get back to that on Monday nights, um, but I also really appreciate the efficiency of being at home and on Zoom, and I'm really glad that we're able to incorporate this into our meetings. Um, so, thank you, and I'm I'm really glad, you know, that we were able to get the short-term rentals across the finish line, um, that has been a discussion that was taking place before I ran for office, and since I've been on council, and, uh, you know, I really appreciate this very action-oriented council. Um, we may not get it perfectly, but we're willing to put in the work and and put our name and and mark on it so that we can, we can do work, so I I just really appreciate all of you.
Thank you, um, Ms. Dozeman, uh, council member Stites?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, I'll echo, um, both, uh, uh, Councilwoman Nosler Beck and Councilwoman Dozeman's, um, sentiments. I really enjoyed Saturday, I think that, uh, we had a really great discussion, and I think that, uh, um, staff did a fantastic job. Um, Ally, Mary Ann, everybody who had a hand in that, that was great. Um, I want to thank everybody who applied for boards and commissions and and who were either appointed tonight, or if if you chose not to reapply or whatever, we really appreciate the hard work that you guys have put in. Um, we couldn't do anything in the city without our boards and commissions, so, um, we really appreciate the people who put the time and the effort into those. Um, and I, as usual, if you can find it, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge, thank you.
Not where I've heard that before, but it seems familiar, thank you. Um, Ms. Weaver?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and I will echo all the thanks and everything. Um, I also wanted to ask, uh, staff about, I noticed on Wheat Ridge Speaks that there is now a red button that, uh, I can push when I've read something, and I was just wondering if that does anything, or goes anywhere, or lets anybody know that I read it.
You didn't push it, did you? Oh, my.
I did push it, I did, I I couldn't stop, so I waited until it said zero read, and so I was that was a question way back from constituents about how do they know that we read it? And I was just curious if you just put that button on there to mess around with me, or if that actually does do something.
Thought we had taken it off, I don't know, Ally, do you know anything about that?
I don't, but we can follow up, we'll get you an answer on that tomorrow.
They must have had an upgrade.
So it was just for me, apparently, today.
Yeah.
It's all good, all right, thanks.
Just checking on your homework, you're a teacher, you know how that is.
Yeah, no, I I'd like to know if it's getting submitted, exactly, thank you.
Uh, council member Hulteen?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um, echo all the thanks, uh, it was a great retreat, it was really good to be in the room with everyone again. Good conversations, um, I also want to thank, uh, I hosted two District Two Gatherers meetings with, um, sort of annual updates, and uh, they were really well-attended, and we told great stories, uh, Councilor Nosler Beck's father told some really, uh, charming history of, uh, growing up on Wadsworth, and recalled when Wadsworth was a dirt road, which was kind of hard to believe for all of us. Um, we recognized five, uh, good neighbors in District Two who've really made a difference and make us really proud to, um, live and work in our district. And, um, I do have a a pretty substantial PDF, uh, document that includes a lot of the details of what I discussed and links to things. If anyone's interested in receiving that as well as the presentation, um, please email me, and I'd be happy to get that to you. Um, and then I just want to recognize Mayor Starker, I was on a, um, statewide call about a possible transportation funding initiative for this year, and the mayor, I believe of Lone Tree, mentioned that our mayor had, uh, called out that, um, our community is, um, you know, always looking for additional funding for, uh, safe, safe, safety for our pedestrians and our bicyclists, and, um, I just was really proud to be be part of Wheat Ridge on that, so, um, with that, just thank everyone for the good work, both our community and our staff tonight. This short-term rental ordinance, uh, was a really, really hefty long-term lift, and, um, you know, I'm, I realize we will probably be revisiting aspects of it in a year, so I invite everyone who spoke tonight, has spoken along the way to please stay in touch with us and let us know how this is, uh, impacting you, uh, in your neighborhoods and and, um, in your short-term rentals, so that when we do revisit it, that we're able to, um, really make corrections that serve everybody, so, thank you. And I'm looking forward to not talking about it again for a little bit, so, thank you.
Thank you, and we continue to push sidewalks on Thirty-Eighth Avenue between Kipling and Young Field, so, uh, glad you were on the call. Uh, council member Urban?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and, uh, thank you to the rest of council for your efforts on Saturday and getting us, uh, some clear priorities, and really appreciate everybody's involvement there. Um, uh, to that end, I thought that we worked well in person, and we should continue to try to do that. And I'd like to see if we need to put it onto a study session to discuss the metrics or parameters under which we can meet in person, or when we would like to schedule the discussion around moving back in person.
Okay.
Any thoughts on that?
We'll, um, we'll leave that out there.
I was kind of hoping for some feedback.
I'll second that if we need to get it on.
I was gonna say, I I'd be up for that discussion, too.
All right, so it's, uh, we'd like to have a discussion on, uh, on getting back in person.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, and then, uh, my second thing is just, uh, following up on the email that we received regarding the budget revisions and the the three-point-seven million dollar, um, overstatement, and I appreciate the explanation that's in that email. Um, my question is whether this becomes a footnote or any other kind of, uh, demarcation relative to this overstatement, or is the extent of it the email that we received regarding the the situation surrounding it?
Yeah, I mean, I'll let Ally speak to it, too, but I I think our plan, Mister Urban, is is to, um, amend the budget before we submit it to the state, so that it has, um, the, uh, more accurate estimates for the twenty-twenty revenues and and expenditures, so that, um, and a more accurate carryover number for the twenty-one budget, so that, um, it's, um, it's it's just more accurate, um, that that I guess that's the footnote, if if you'd like, and actually, we're gonna put a a note in the bud, in the bud manager's message in front of the budget, and, um, I don't know if you're talking about the the audit, if there will be an actual footnote in the audit, I don't think this rises to a level of of a audit footnote, but, I don't know, Ally, you have any thoughts on that?
No, I think that's exactly right, I'm working on that right now, actually repackaging the budget with a a note out of, you know, in order to be transparent to the community, um, that that will that will cover that. Um, again, it doesn't require, we're not, we're not at least recommending that you change any of the twenty-twenty-one appropriations based on how the numbers came in and where we're sitting.
I appreciate that, and and that was really kind of my question, is it relates to whether this is a footnote in the presentation, or if it's a footnote or finding within the the actual audit, so doesn't sound like it rises to the level of a finding or footnote in the actual audit, correct?
I I don't believe it is.
We don't believe so, but we'll make sure that when, um, Mark, Mark Cohen, not, believe it or not, we're gonna, well, we're working on last year's audit right now, but um, this would be an audit note potentially for, um, the audit they do next year for this year's budget, right? So, um, we'll make sure that we're transparent with our auditors about it and see what they say.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, um, council member Hoppy?
Uh, usually you go with Judy before me, so I was, I wasn't.
Well, let me, let me go to, uh, excuse me, uh, council member Hutchinson, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you, Mister Mayor, um, sorry, all my clocks are kind of going off, you could have gone, Janice, before me. I think we had a very productive, um, meeting tonight, and I did like the the retreat, and I want to thank Denise for all the work that she did for, um, the, uh, retreat delivering and, you know, the information and getting the food and everything like that, so that was very good. I also wanted to really thank the people who, um, applied to be on the boards and commissions, because, um, I think it's an exciting thing to do, and and you can kind of see how, you know, the city's working and and, um, strive for things you're interested in. So, other than that, I just be safe, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, now it's your turn, uh, council member Hoppy?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and I don't have anything new to say, because that's what happens when you're on the end. However, I do want to say thank you to everybody for all the hard work we did over, uh, Saturday. Um, between Saturday and, um, today, uh, tomorrow, I'm I'm taking a no-city council day. So it was a, it was a long three days of city council, so, um, I am so thankful, we had, uh, I've been on council this November, it'll be six years, and for several years, tried to get the short-term rentals, um, you know, tried to get the conversation started, and finally, about eighteen months ago, we were able to get it started, lots of hard work, big, heavy lift, everybody's already said it, but nobody's done this. Happy dance, get that business done, I'm happy to have that put to bed. And so, thank you, everybody, and I appreciate everybody's hard work across all council, all the staff, and all of the departments, so, thank you, love you guys and all your work.
Thank you very much, big lift. So, uh, thank you all for, uh, for a great, uh, a great turnout, and and really a lot of hard work and and good work that we did on Saturday. I think, uh, it's really exciting to listen to what's going on in our city, what what we've accomplished, what goals we have for the future. Uh, I would like to thank all of our citizens who, uh, applied for and are and are joining our boards and commissions and working together with us and other residents in the community to make this the greatest place to live, uh, work and play in the in the. work and play in the in the state. I want to thank especially all the speakers who came tonight to speak with us because it's through hearing your voices that we make better decisions ourselves because it truly is a group effort. Thank you all for staying safe, for keeping your your neighbors and your your friends and family and and everyone safe in our community. And please watch for all the, all the children that are that are going to school, hopefully more soon. And watch for them and be careful. We're still in the winter. And we've got some slippery streets coming. But we appreciate all you do for our community. So if there's no further business to come before the council for this meeting, we will stand adjourned. Good night, everyone.